... Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit. Pagka, may nilang angkula at awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wakaw at moy ng buhay naratinginil. Ang pituming at haraw niya kailan, ang pali manggilingil. Luba ng maraw na ang warangit pagsikta. Uyay langit sa dito. Ang iligaya napakmay mahapin. Ang lamatay ng tao sa'yo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Thank you. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, respectfully move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of Bills and Resolutions on First Reading, as well as Communications and Committee Reports. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
In objections, hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the Bills and Resolutions.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 8356, granting survivorship benefits to the surviving legitimate spouse of a deceased chairperson, commissioner, or labor arbiter of the National Labor Relations Commission, Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8357, transferring the new beliebit prison from Poblacion Montinlupa City to Kuyambay Tanay Rizal, Representative Biazon.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8358, providing for a comprehensive national flood control act, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Disaster Management.
House Bill 8359, providing for a comprehensive national broadband development act, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 8360, prohibiting all telecommunications company, service provider to charge and collect monthly service fees during the period of suspension of any postpaid subscription, period of temporary disconnection, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 8361, prohibiting the disposal of electronic devices at solid waste management facilities, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 8362, promoting local arts and entertainment industry by providing the local movie and film industry corporate tax breaks and exempting venue operators from the payment of amusement tax when showing locally produced films and music events featuring Filipino artists, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 8363, granting bereavement leave of 12 days paid to all employees in the private and public sectors, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment and the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 8364, declaring May 17 of every year is the National Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
Resolutions: House Resolution 2221, commending and congratulating the Iglesia Ni Cristo for successfully holding international outreach programs in New York and Connecticut last September 14, 2018, Representative Castillo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2222, urging the proper committee of the House to inquire and or investigate the malfeasance of both the GSIS and DEA officers in relation to the non-deduction of the GSIS loan premium from the salaries of public school teachers, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2223, commending Mrs. Jenny Marie de Blanca Flor for winning the Best Oral Presenter Award at the recently concluded International Conference on Advanced Pharmacy and Pharmaceutical Sciences in Indonesia, Representative Trenas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2224, congratulating, commending Filipino sports shooters who competed in the Far East Asia International Practical Shooting Confederation Handgun Championship 2018, Representatives Nogralles Sambor and Nogralles Carno.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated October 3, informing the House that on even date, the Senate approved Conference Committee report in the Bi-Camera Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provision of Senate Bill 1363 and House Bill 7402.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated October 3, informing the House that on October 2, the Senate designated Senators Ontiveros, Legarda, Ejercito, Po, and Pangilinen as conferees to the Bi-Camera Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provision of Senate Bill Number 2023 and House Bill 7442.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated October 4, informing the House that on October 3, the Senate approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Camera Conference on Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1305 and House Bill 4113.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated October 4, informing the House that on October 3, the Senate adopted House Concordant Resolution Number 21.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee reports: Report Number 886 by the Committee on Dangerous Drugs on House Bill 8378.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 887, 888, and 889 by the Committee on Justice on House Bill Numbers 8380, 8381, and 8382.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 890 by the Committee on Transportation on House Bill Number 8394.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, respectfully move that we defer the calling of the roll.
In objections, hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, respectfully move that we defer approval of the journal.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, respectfully move that we suspend session.
Session suspended.
Sir, ipa, sir ipa pa 'yung sa ano, MMDA?
Where are we now?
Ipa pa 'yan.
Ipa 'yung MMDA.
Ako lang, sir, perfele, percutra.
Ay, hindi po, hindi po. Hindi na nungu, pagkatapos, hindi na.
We are ready. We are all ready. Don't look at us, we are all ready.
Sir, ito sir, may isa pang mag-deliver na 'yung sponsorship speech. Si Kumpua sa speech.
Ay, hindi ba siya pwede?
Speech lang daw, sir.
Get, get, get. Ano ba 'yan? Gagoyan.
Buwing.
Hindi ba tayo paenterin lang to?
I heard the president loud and clear. Ayoko lang, pakialam.
Yung painik, yung.
Yung mama mo.
Then, then, yung.
Yung bago.
Alam mo, 'yung mga. Yung mga sta natin. There will be tatanong. On ah. Sir, ito. Ayoko lang 'yung kayong nobi. Ah. Pero hindi ka. Pero ito 'yung.
The rules dictate.
The rules dictate, but system. Pala, kami, sana namin. The most accomplishment, hindi na wala kang. Yun.
Agreeable sa labas.
Yun. Artist.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Una, una.
Ah, she get, she got, you got.
Unay mo, mo na 'yung. Orey, unang dami na kami. At 'yung, 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 'yung. 'Yung organisiyo pa.
Sorry, hindi niya nung. I love you, Mano. I love you. I love you.
Yung ano, eh, ah, ruley.
Oh, I remember. I didn't sponsor. I can sponsor now. Ah, traffic. Ay, di pala. Di kaya pala.
Oh, alam mo. A journey natin. He, eh... The break cannot be longer than fifteen minutes. Alright, thirty minutes have passed. I'm not moved. That's good enough reason for doing. Unang-una, yung ano, si... Sir, troclaim. Gan. Sakol, che, ro. No, yung ano. Yun, no? Yun, ah, buheng. Sabagay. Um, meron pa 'yan. Wala ni.
Session issue. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill number 8244, under Committee Report number 863, submitted by the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. Madam Speaker, copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members, and I request therefore that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill number 8244, annac expanding the definition of sexual harassment, strengthening the mechanisms to monitor compliance with policies against sexual harassment in the workplace and in educational and training institutions, and prescribing penalties for violations thereof. Repealing for the purpose the Public Act number 7877, also referred to as the Anti-Sexual Harassment Act of 1995.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Women and Gender Equality, the Honorable Bernadette Herrera D., be recognized to begin sponsorship of the measure.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Honorable Herrera D. is recognized to sponsor the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that, um, we use the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech for this particular measure.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the... the lady from Gabriela Partilis, the Honorable Emmy de Jesus, to deliver her sponsorship speech.
So moved, Madam Speaker. Emmy de Jesus. Is there an objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Honorable de Jesus is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, unang-una, uh, ito ay kinikilala namin ang pagbubukas para sa second reading ng amendment na ito, under the Committee Report number 82... uh, 82... 863. Sa mga pinagsama-sama ang mga panukala, para higit na bigyang pagbabago o amendments doon sa ating existing sexual harassment law, at pagkilala doon sa pagsisikap ng committee na finally ay maupuan ito, at hanggang mapagtagumpayan na umabot sa yugto ng second reading. Kinikilala namin ang managing praktika mula sa karanasan ng iba't ibang women's organization in regards to their difficulty in getting justice for the victims of sexual harassment. Kaya, isa pong naalala ko na mga karanasan, ayaw mong lumalapit nung ako po ay wala pa sa kongreso, at bahagi ng Gabriela Alliance. Kung saan, habang bagsak na bagsak ang moral at pagtatao ng mga biktima ng sexual harassment, lalong-lalo na kung ang perpetrator ay hindi nanggagaling doon sa higit na mataas ang authority doon sa kanya, hindi talaga makakuha ng justice o katarungan ang victim. Isang mayor na pagkilala dito sa amendment ay ang definition ng sexual harassment, at kung ang... ang higit na magiging mapagpa siya ay 'yung nararamdaman, 'yung nararamdaman ng biktima doon sa nangyari sa kanya, at hindi rin nangangailangan na ang perpetrator ay may higit na mataas na posisyon doon sa kanya. Pangalawang punto na nais naming kilalanin sa pag-eexpand ng, uh, batas ay kaugnay kung saan nangyayari, kung saan nangyayari ang, uh, sexual na paniligali sa biktima. Dahil malinaw, ang nagiging... ang kinikilala lamang ay kapag naganap ang sexual na paniligali o sexual harassment doon sa within the vicinity of the training or academic institutions or doon sa employment. Pero dito sa ating panukalang batas, kapagka magkakilala o mayroong relasyon bilang magkaempleado o within the, uh, institution ng academia or ng training, at nagkaroon ng sexual na paniligali doon sa isang biktima, ito ay maaari ng mabigyan ng proteksyon. Tinitiyak din ng batas na ito, ang pagkakaroon talaga ang pagtitiyak ng pagkakaroon ng kodi sa lahat, sa lahat, uh, pampubliko man o pribado ng Committee on Decorum. Para tiyakin na kung mayroong magrereklamo, magkakaroon ng kadyat na masusumbungan ang sinumang magiging biktima. Ilan lamang ito sa nakikita naming dapat itulak na progresibong hakbang, at sa bahagi ng Gabriela Women's Party, pagkilala muli, no, sa ating Chair at sa mga kasapi ng Committee on Women and Gender Equality, na sa kalabing pitong kongreso, isa na sana uli itong legacy ng Seventeenth Congress doon sa pagkakaroon ng higit na progresibong batas kaugnay ng sexual harassment. So yun lamang, Madam Chair, at maraming salamat.
Thank you, Honorable de Jesus. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that, um, we begin the period of interpolation. There being no member who wishes to interpolate any of the sponsors, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments. There being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill number 8244, as contained in Committee Report number 863. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. All those in favor of... All those in favor of House Bill 8244, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill H... 8244 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill number 8282, as contained in Committee Report number 876, copies of which were previously distributed to the members. I request therefore that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill number 8282, annac declaring the province of Catanduanes as the abaca capital of the Philippines.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we... uh, that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Agriculture and Food, the Honorable, uh, Ben... Pangani Ban, Jose Pangani Ban, be recognized to sponsor the measure.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Honorable Pangani Ban is recognized to sponsor the bill. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, uh, I am adopting the explanatory mode of the bill as my sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Honorable Pangani Ban. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we big... we open the period of interpolation.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no, um, individual or committee amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill number 8282, as contained in Committee Report number 876.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. All those in favor of House Bill 8282, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8282 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Madam Speaker.
Session resumed. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar bus of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7849 contained in Committee Report 786.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, copies of the said bill have been previously distributed to the members. I request therefore that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill without pre, to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 7849, an act providing for a free and culture-sensitive civil registration system for indigenous peoples.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Partiles to begin the sponsorship of the measure.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Honorable Brosas is recognized to sponsor the bill. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon. There are, there are only a few countries left in the world with a preserved and somehow intact indigenous population. The Philippines ranks among the countries of Australia, New Zealand, as well as Oceania, Micronesia, and other islands in the Pacific, and a few republics in Latin America as one of those places where modern society exists side by side with indigenous cultural communities. As such, it is one of our duty to spearhead laws and legislation that will protect our indigenous countrymen from the destruction of the, of their own way of life. Among the three branches of government, the legislative branch is possibly the most active protector of IP rights when it passed the landmark Indigenous Peoples' Rights Act in 1997. Yet, when there are projects for IPs that need funding, the most important question of how much will the project cost more often than not hinges on an equally important yet unanswerable question: How many IPs are there? While it is true that there exists a government agency known as the National Commission on Indigenous People, an agency tasked with the general welfare of indigenous people, the NCIP itself has inaccurate data on the IP population in our country. How many IPs are born every year? How many die? How many die of natural causes? How many die of sickness? How many could have been treated? How many are minors? How many have reached the age of seniority? How many get married every year? How many children does an average couple have? While it is true that the NCIP can answer these queries, it wa, it would actually be less knowing the answer and more having a general idea. The NCIP's data is estimated to be inconsistent with reality and this inconsistency has a discrepancy too large, too large for any claim of accuracy. This all actually boils down to simple reality. The IPs need to be counted, but they seem to have a natural aversion of anything related to registration. They care not for birth certificates or death certificates because they live and die like their ancestors have done. They care not for driver's licenses for they have no vehicles, they navigate, and their communities have neither roads nor infrastructures. They care not for casting their ballots and voting for their leaders because the only leaders they know are their elders and there is nothing a politician can give them that they cannot do for themselves. But these registration procedures are a bureaucratic necessity. They are needed in order to know that the beneficiaries of government services are bona fide citizens of the Philippines. The administration of health, education, and other basic social services require at the very least a birth certificate, which most IPs do not have and which most IPs don't care about. This indifference however should not be a deterrent for the state. If the IPs don't want to leave their ancestral lands for whatever reason, then it is the state that must go to them. The passage of House Bill 7849 ensures that the state provide a free and culture-sensitive civil registration system for indigenous people part of the government's mandate to protect the welfare of its citizens. But they must first feel that they are citizens of the state without losing their identity as IPs. They must feel that they are part of a long history that coexists side by side with their long tradition of indigenous customs. They must feel that they are citizens of the Philippines while still being a part of their indigenous cultural community. They must feel that they are Filipinos and this bill is the first step on that long journey of self-realization. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Brosas. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of debate and interpolation.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to do individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of individual amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we terminate the period of committee amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number... 7849.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. All those in favor of House Bill 77849, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7849 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move, under the calendar of business, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7785 as contained in Committee Report 765. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members. I request therefore that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 7785, an act establishing a framework for the selection of national performing arts companies designated for the purpose certain performing arts genres and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Eva Escudero from the First District of Sarsagon for her sponsorship speech.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Honorable Escudero is recognized to sponsor the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, made my, uh, explanatory note be my sponsorship for this particular bill.
Thank you, Honorable Escudero. Majority Floor Leader.
I so move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Buhay Partiles, Representative, um, Lito Atienza, the Deputy Minority Leader Lito Atienza, Senior Deputy Minority Leader Lito Atienza, for his interpolation.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Honorable Atienza is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Majority Floor Leader. And we would like to request the lady sponsor to, uh, exchange some of our questions on the well-intended measure.
I, I agree, Mr. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Of course, at the outset, we agree with the intentions of this measure that it's about time that the Philippines develops its own national performing arts companies. But I would like to ask the sponsor though, how does she define a national performing art company?
Yes, thank you for the question. The national arts company would be a company that would be, uh, uh, consist of five different cultural, um, companies like the company for ballet, company for theater, company for orchestral music, uh, company for choral music, and company for string ensemble. Madam Chair.
Tinatanggap po ng ating nginyu lingkon, 'yung definition nila. Naesko lang diwan agin. 'Yung po bang national performing art company ay, hinakailangan mayroong minimum members or minimum participating members or a brief history of record, public record, that they have been doing such, uh, performing, performing arts in the country. Meron po ba ng minimum requirement? Or anybody can apply immaterial if they were just organized yesterday.
Madam Chair, um, um, it would, it would be a consist, uh, consist of, uh, members for, that the CCP and the NCCA would, uh, select from members in the different companies that I have mentioned and, uh, there would be one representative from each company. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Opo. Ang tanung ko po ay, meron po ba requirement on the experiences, record of such companies applying for this subsidy offered by the government and through this law? Or anybody can apply, as I mentioned, stressing the obvious, anybody organized yesterday, can they apply today?
Uh, Madam Chair, meron po silang selection committee that would give criteria to be members of this particular national performing arts company. Meron pong gagawin silang, um, committee that would select, um, different performers from different companies. Uh, wala pong, wala pong, uh, wala pong sinabi dito na meron silang, um, basta meron artistic excellence in their own particular field.
Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, binibigay na natin 'yung, uh, laya sa mga ibat-ibang ahensya like Cultural Center of the Philippines, the National Commission on Culture and the Arts, 'yung requirements as envisioned by this law. Ganun po ba yon?
Opo. Opo, Madam Chair.
Hindi po ba mas magandang ilagay na natin sa batas para po naman 'yung discretion ng mga NGOs involved with the arts are somehow contained and measured. Indeed, according to them, this group is good. They started yesterday and therefore we will recommend them for the 10 million peso subsidy a year. We're talking about 50 million subsidy here and don't you think we would be more prudent and more accurate in our objectives of promoting, genuinely promoting arts in the Philippines if we put in the law that they have to have some track record in the field that they are applying? In other words, you cannot apply for this particular benefit if only because you have friends in the National Commission of Culture and the Arts or friends in the Cultural Center of the Philippines. The law would immediately disqualify you if you are hurriedly organized or organized only yesterday and applying for 10 million today. Hindi po ba mas maganda, tatanggap po ba ang ating sponsor ng mesh, ng provision that will define the good intentions of the proposed law? That it will go to the deserving, deserving and sacrificing NGOs groups who have already been rendering promotions of the arts and culture without any subsidy from the government? This is the first time we are going to subsidize their activities. Hindi po ba mas magandang siguruhin natin ang makikinabang dito ay 'yung mga namuhuna na at patagal na nagpo-promote ng ating kultura?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, maganda po ang suggestion ng ating, um, interpreter. Siguro po, dadagdag dalan natin itong provision na ito na gusto niyo ilagay na meron silang track record before they are even selected to be members of the national performing arts companies. Madam, Madam Chair.
Maaari po bang tumanggap ang ating kagalang-galang na sponsor ng dagdag na provision kapagka napu-tayo sa period of amendments?
Uh, sige po, Madam Chair. Tatanggapin po namin siguro 'yung provision na yon.
My next clarificatory question is pertaining to the, uh, classifications of the groups mentioned. One is a qualified applicant for ballet and contemporary dance. One qualified applicant for theater. One qualified applicant for orchestral music. One qualified applicant for choral music. And one qualified applicant for string ensemble. Ito po'y bumabanggit ng iba't ibang category. Pero hindi po tayo naglalagay ng bilang na maaaring bumuo sa isang, um, potential beneficiary of this subsidy. In other words, pwedeng dalawa lang ang member? Pwedeng dalawang po ang member? Pwede po bang dalawang daan ang member? Hindi po ba mas magandang ilagay natin ang, ang ating pinagsama-samang karanasan na kailangan ay meron tayong minimum number ng mga miyembro para matiyak natin mas marani ang makikinabang dito sa napakagandang measure ninyo?
Actually po, Madam Chair, dito po sa section E, uh, at sa provision letter E, section five, nakalagay po doon to select additional 15 members or three members from each of the different, um, companies mentioned to be included also, uh, as members of this particular, um, national performing arts company.
Is the lady sponsor envisioning the benefits of this measure to reach to the individual or to the group where he or she belongs? Tupo ba limitado, limitado sa mga grupo? O pwede namang magapply ang isang palagay ninyo ay napakagaling na pianista? A solo pianist or a violinist? Will he qualify to get a share of this fund that we are appropriating? Or he has to belong to a company?
Pwede po, Madam, Madam Chair, dahil nandito po naman, uh, each company would have at least three from each company. So, three from, is... So, three from a string ensemble, kaya pwede pong pumasok dito 'yung magaling na violinista.
Di siguro maganda rin pong liwanagin natin 'yun in the period of amendments so that we will ensure that the individual Filipino artist also gets qualified to benefit from this subsidy which we are discussing. 'Yung isang magaling na public school student na talagang Bertusos of Berlin ay hindi kailangan mapabilang sa anumang grupo, ay maaari siguro siya mag-apply. Nang siya'y matulungan ng gobyerno, makapag-aaral pa ng advanced schooling in the art of playing instrument of violin, so that his God-given talent is given an opportunity for full development. Or you would rather that he applies to be a member of a company?
Sa batas po, he should be a member of the company, of that particular performing arts.
Isn't that limiting, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, limiting the accessibility of this fund to possibly hundreds or maybe even thousands of Filipino artists who are not members of any company, but they struggle to learn, to exercise, to practice their art and excelling thereafter without any government support whatsoever? Hindi po ba magandang isama na natin dito 'yan?
Pwede rin po, Madam Chair, kaya nga po, they are encouraging all these artists to join this particular company so that they can be accredited or they can be qualified to be members of this national performing arts company. Kumbaga, each company, like for example, the Ballet Contemporary Dance Company would encourage all these dancers to join the company so they can be qualified to enter into the national performing arts company.
Isn't that putting a barrier between the benefits of this measure and to the individual God-given talent of a poor Filipino boy or girl who needs further training and education with their art or with his art? Eh, kung siya'y i-require natin magmiyembro ka muna ng isang kompanya, eh, baka hindi po mangyari 'yun sapagat kung siya'y walang paraan upang pumunta rin sa lugar ng kompanya ng 'yun, dahil siya'y tigasamar, eh, hindi siya aabutin itong measure na ito. The intention of this representation is to make sure that the benefits of supporting financially performing arts or companies reach down and trickle down to benefiting the individual Filipino artist struggling with his art. Marami po kasi tayong alam na magaling, talaga namang God-given talent, pero hindi po siya miyembro ng anumang grupo sapagat wala siyang estado sa lipunan at hindi po siya masali dun sa mga binipili. At hindi ko naman inaakusahan ang Cultural Center of the Philippines or the NCCA. But he will not qualify simply because he has no money to go and practice at the CCP because he is from Catmalogan, Sumat. Hindi po magandang ibigay na natin na pagkakataon ang mga bata sa probinsya? Pag nabalitaan nila, ipinasan natin itong batas na ito, "Abay, may encourage sila." Pupunta kami sa Maynila ng anak ko. Ia-apply ko 'yun sa magandang binipisyo na mabigyan ng training ang aking anak. 12 years old, but very, very good in piano play. Walang nagturo, walang teacher, pero naupo sa piano. Naglaro ng Rockmaninoff, Chopin, na walang nagturo. Marami pong ganyan. At kung hindi po rati sila isasama, eh, parang ma-monopolize ng mga grupo at not necessarily reaching out to the individual talents of young artists today. Not to mention that if you belong to a company, chances are, the company will control the funds. And in any management of funds, they'll come into play weaknesses of human nature. Meron din po silang paborito dyan, meron silang inaalagaan. Eh, kaawa-awa po 'yung si Juan de la Cruz. Graduate the public school. Magaling talaga ang tumugtog ng Berlin, pero hindi po siya kinikilala sapagat hindi siya nakasakay sa kotse. Pag practice nila, umuuwi po siya naglalakad. Marami pong ganyan eh. 'Yan ang inaalala kong maiiwanan kung ang ating bibigyan ng tulong ay 'yung kompanya, 'yung organisasyon, at rather than individual who also comprise and make up the organization in the company. But just to make sure that the benefit of 50 million subsidy for one group eh, in five years. Eh, pakinabangan din naman ang mga bata na wala po naman sila talagang yaman at wala silang koneksyon. Kung malapit sila sa isang congressman, baka pwede po sila matulungan ng congressman. Pero kung hindi rin po sila matulungan ang mga congressman nila, maiiwanan po itong magandang layunin na ito na tulungan na natin once and for all ang galing ng Pilipino.
Tama po kay dyan, Madam Chair, at Congressman Atienza. Pero dito po sa section four, nandito po ang roles and functions of this particular national performing arts company that sinasayad din po dito that they will develop and build a repertoire of original Filipino workers in the performing arts para ma-apply po lahat ng mga magagaling na talents dito sa ating bayan. Madam Chair.
Kaya ko po nilinaw 'yung section D, where you enumerated those who are qualified.
Opo.
And you talked about A, one qualified applicant. Ano po bang inyong pakahulugan sa one applicant? One applicant applying company or one applying individual?
Dito po sa, ang sinasabi naming applicant, this is for the selection committee na magbuo ng National Performing Arts Committee. Ito po 'yung seleksyon na sinasabi namin dito. Pero 'yung selection po ng performers, hindi po 'yan limited. It would be for all who are in the field of culture, performing arts.
Madam Speaker, for the gentle lady also accept certain adjustments on the provisions on how to implement this well-intentioned measure. Just to make sure that the individual artist is not controlled by this measure. Na kung hindi ka sasali sa kompanya, eh, wala kang qualification. You will not be entertained. Ang nais po ng nitong representasyong ito ay buksan natin ang pinto ng pagkakataon. Since we are appropriating millions of pesos and for the first time, maybe, really offering government subsidy to develop the God-given talents of our children, rich or poor. Eh, gawin na natin dito sa batas na ito. Wag nating iasa sa mga NGOs. Because the NGOs could have their own beneficiaries in mind. And the gentle lady will no longer be able to control the decisions once we pass this law. But if in the law, it is so provided, it will be very clear and no organization will dare violate the intentions, clarified and mentioned clearly in the letter of the law.
Madam Chair, ano po ang gustong amendment ng ating kagalang-galang na interpreter, Congressman Atienza?
Pagdating po ng period of amendments, I will ask for a meeting with the gentle lady and we will put, one by one, all the provisions that we would want included to protect precisely the good intentions of the proposed law. Because the way we look at it, it's too general. You're practically giving the organizations full control of the scholarship fund that you are providing. Mas maganda po siguro ilagay natin sa batas. Papano ang bawat isa ay maaaring makinabang? Na ito'y hindi para sa grupo lang. Maaari ito para sa sinumang megaling at ito'y matutulungan nitong batas na ito. So, with the kind permission of the gentle lady, at the proper time, we will work it out with her on the amendments that we are working on.
Salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Now, I would just would like to ask, you have five categories. One for ballet and contemporary dance. Ano po ba 'yung difference between ballet and contemporary dance?
Contemporary po 'yung mga modern dancers natin. 'Yung ballet po, 'yung ballet. Sir, alam naman niyo siguro 'yun?
Ang ibig po ba sabihin nito eh, isang ballet company at isang contemporary?
Hindi, isa lang po sila.
Isa lang.
Opo.
In other words,
One representative for both.
If there's an excellent ballet company at napasabay sila sa excellent contemporary company, dance company, isa lang ang pipiliin natin?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I'd like to ask, why are we limiting it to such situation? Where isa lang ang makikinabang as amantahalang 'yung contemporary dance group? Eh, palagay niyo'y lumabas na sa the world theaters of Las Vegas and America's got talent, Filipinos got talent, eh disqualified sila pag naunaan sila ng ballet, ganun ba 'yun? O gusto rin 'yung paghiwalayin natin 'yan? Dahil iba po 'yung ballet, hindi po ba?
Opo.
Iba po naman 'yung contemporary.
Yes, Madam Chair.
'Yung ballet, there is no such thing as a modern ballet, no?
No.
Pagka nag-modern ka, contemporary ka na. Pag-classical ka, ballet ka.
Pero ito po ang ginawa sa bill, isa lang po ang representante para sa dance which includes both ballet and contemporary. Para hindi po masyadong maraming miyembro sa kompanya, sa performing arts company.
Pag nanunuod po ako ng television, nakikita kong galing ng mga Pilipinong nagpe-perform sa mga programang binanggit ko. Eh, kahanga-hanga, pinapalakpa ka ng buong mundo. Eh, sila disqualified pag may nakapasok na pong ballet. Bakit hindi natin gawin dalawa? Contemporary, ballet, classical, modern?
Madam Chair, magiging anim na po 'yung miyembro. Hindi po lima. Kailangan po magdagdag pa ng isa pa po.
Kung kailangan po magdagdag, eh, bakit naman tayo magtitipid pa at this point in time? Tulungan na natin lahat, ang kwalifikado. In the same manner, sa po pumapasok 'yung folk dance or cultural folk dance companies? Sa ballet po ba sila o contemporary?
Baka papasok ko 'yun sa classical or folk dance. Iba po, iba pa rin po 'yun.
'Yung Philippine folk dance, papasok sa ballet, ganun po ba?
Hindi po, sa, baka po sa contemporary, papasok or another category.
Hindi po ba mas maganda kung meron tayong ballet company, meron tayong contemporary, at meron din po tayong folk arts company? Dahil iba po 'yung folk arts, iba po naman 'yung ballet. In fact, wala naman tayong originally Filipino ballet. 'Yan po'y creation 'yan. Pero 'yung Filipino folk arts, 'yan po'y mahagi ng ating pagkatao bilang Filipino. Kaya lang, ang malungkot na katotohanan ay hindi na alam ng mga bata ngayon kung ano 'yung mga folk arts nung araw. Na tinataguyod ng marami, pero hindi po sila nagpatuloy dahil siyempre nauubusan ng pera o kaya eh, nag-iiba na ang concentration ng institusyon. So therefore, today, if you want to see traditional folk dancing, you wouldn't know what to go. And that is a very sad commentary on our country. In the Philippines, dito po sa ating bansa, gusto niyo manood ng ating mga katutubong sayaw, na galing sa Luzon, Visayas, Mindanao, wala po kayong mapupunta dahil wala na po 'yung training process so that quality shows are enjoyed by audiences. Etong batas na ito, magtutulong po ng 10 million a year. Malaking bagay po ito sa mga nagsisikap at gumagawa ng paraan upang ang mga bata ay mabigyan sila ng special training on folk dancing. Ang iyong lingkod, ako'y naging folk dancer. Kaya alam ko po itong aking binabanggit na parang nakalimutan na naman natin 'yung ating sarili. Naalala natin 'yung ballet, naalala natin 'yung contemporary, pero nakalimutan natin na meron tayong sariling katutubong Pilipinong kultura sa pamamagitan ng sayaw. Hindi po ba magandang isama natin 'yung folk arts also to be included? Alam niyo, ang kadalasang pintas sa mga humahawak ng kultura ng ating mga iba't ibang sektor at ng ating mga organisasyon. Hindi ko po naman diroon lahat, at wag sana silang magalit, subalit marami sa kanila ay nabibilang po sa elitista. Kapagka ikaw ay ordinary folk dancer, either ikaw ay abnormal o kaya eh, binabae o kaya eh, marami pong diatawag sa mga folk dancers. Ito na pagkakataon, bigyan natin ng official na pagkilala ang lahat ng mga nagsisikap magtanghal ng mga sayaw, pantang Pilipino na kinagigiliwa ng buong mundo, pero hindi rito sa atin dahil walang pagkilala ang gobyerno at ang batas. Now that we have a law, and that's the reason why I am supporting this law, this is an opportunity now to give all art forms in dance, in singing, in instrument playing, an opportunity to develop. Pero wag natin kakalimutan po 'yung ating kulturan Pilipino. Kung hindi po naman ay sayang. At ay baka gumaling sa ballet, gumaling tayo sa stage, gumaling tayo sa choral group. Eh, papaano po 'yung mga mananayaw ng ating sining at kalinangang Pilipino? So, pa pwede po ba natin isiyad 'yung isang kategori ng 'yun? Magkaroon din tayo ng scholarships or support for those engaged in folk arts presentation? Para po maraming mainganyo, ang panaginip po natin lahat, ang Pilipino ay palakpan sa pagtatanghal ng ating sariling kultura. Hindi po 'yung galing ko sa hip-hop, hindi po 'yung galing ko sa contemporary dancing. 'Yung galing ko sa pagsaysayangan tiniklin ng pandango sa ilaw. Hindi po ba maganda 'yun? Para matuto rin ang ating mga bata na mag-appreciate ng ating tunay na pagkatao. Otherwise, this measure will be lame and lacking if we do not include that particular sector. 'Yung mga grupo na nagsisikap sa kanilang research, sa kanilang training, sa kanilang disiplina, at kanilang pagpunta sa mga communities upang humanap ng mga bata ang merong tunay na galing na sila naman ay mabigyan ng suporting training at bibigyan sila ng supporta dahil bibigyan natin ng 10 million eh. 10 million support per year is more than enough to train a special group of performer.
Madam Chair, siguro pwede nating idagdag 'yun po, pero sa amendment, salang po natin gagawin ito dahil po magiging pito na po itong miyembro pag nagdagdag po tayo ng isa pa at ihiwalay natin ang ballet at contemporary dance company. Madam Chair.
Madam Speaker, am I to understand that the sponsor is open to adjustments in the different beneficiary groups that are intended by this law? And we strongly recommend isama natin 'yung sarili nating kultura kagustuhan nating turuan ang ating mga kababayan na mag-appreciate at mag-enjoy sa ating sariling kanta, sayaw, tugtugin. Ngayon ay lumalaki ang mga bata, hindi na nila kilala 'yung kundiman. Hindi na nila kilala 'yung harana. Eh, kaya ako'y medyo nababagabag dahil gumagawa na rin tayo ng mga pelikula. dahil gumagawa na rin tayo ng mga pelikulang hindi natin ginagamitan ng mga tunay na himig, na high, na hanguk sa mga nilika ng ating mga batikang um, composers of yesteryears. Mga harana nating with the golden memories of yesteryears to rekindle. Among the young today, a love for our own at makikilala nila ang Pilipino ay hindi tayo mangmang, hindi tayo nagkulang, hindi tayo masasabing dumake ng walang kultura. Malalim pong masyadong 'tong problema ng to, I'm just taking the opportunity of bringing out my, my own sentiments on what is lacking in our country. Ang kulang po sa atin, appreciation nung atin, sariling atin. Kaya etong batas neto eh susuportan ko, ulalagyan niyo na provision din para tulungan ang mga grupong nagsisikap na talagang magtanghal ng mga palabas na Pilipino sa sayaw at sa entablado.
Ah, maraming salamat po, maraming salamat din po, ma-madam Chair. Ah, Madam Chair, since I'm not the main sponsor for this particular, I'm the main, uh, author of this particular bill, 'yung amendments po, I think would have to be asked to the main author. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, um, with that manifestation, I would like to move that we
To spend.
Temporarily set aside this measure and we will sit with the sponsors no matter how many they are and I will officially recommend what I have just mentioned for the record. Na parang naman magiging uh, magandang epekto nitong batas neto at nilalaan na natin ng pera ay magbunga po naman ng pagbabago sa pananaw at sa pag-iisip ng mga batang Pilipino ngayon na lumalaking, hindi na nila kilala kung sino sila. Mas kilala nila si Lady Gaga ng, uh, napapanood nila sa kanilang iPad. Pero, patatanim niyo sila sa mga tugtuging na nagbigay inspirasyon sa mga Pilipino, sa ating mga digmaan, revolución. Marami tayong dinaanang mga yugto ng ating kasaysayan bilang isang bansa na galing sa kultura natin. Ngayon, wala na pong inspirasyon, ganun, sapagkat masyado tayong nalibang sa mga banyaga. Esamantala lang sila dapat gumaya sa atin, tayo ngayon ang gumagaya. So I would like to take that opportunity of sitting down with the sponsors so that we can work out specific amendments in this particular bill.
Maraming salamat po Congressman Atsens, maraming salamat po Madam Chair. We will sit down with the Honorable Atsens for these amendments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Papasalamat po ako sa ating gagalang-galang na sponsor, Kongresista Escudero. Sa kanyang magandang napapanahong panahala. Kailangan lang natin pagtulong-tulungan upang ito'y magiging tugma sa hamon ng panahon ngayon. Tayo gutom, ang ating mga kabataan ay uhaw sa kultura. Pero unain natin 'yung kulturang Pilipino. Salamat po.
Thank you, thank you Honorable Atsensa, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill 7785.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business, um, House Resolution um, Number 22 and direct the Secretary General to read.
Still objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the bill, of the resolution.
Additional reference of business, resolution, House Concurrent Resolution Number 22. Concurrent resolution recalling from the Office of the President the enrolled copies of Senate Bill Number 1233 and House Bill Number 5745 entitled "The Not Creating the Coconut Farmers and Industry Trust Fund", Providing for Its Management, Utilization, and For Other Purposes. Sept. Andaya.
To the committee rules.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Representative Maria Lourdes Acosta Alba from the First District of Bikoednon, composed of 26 senior high school students and four faculty members of the Holy Cross High School, Manolo Forte, Bukednon.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Gabriel Bardado Jr. from the Third District of Camarina Sur and they are the graduate students from the College of Public Affairs and Development of the University of the Philippines, Los Baños, headed by Professor Eileen V. Lapitan, PhD.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of... I move that we take up House Concurrent Resolution Number 22 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the bill.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 22. Concurrent resolution recalling from the Office of the President the enrolled copies of Senate Bill Number 1233 and House Bill Number 5745 entitled "The Not Creating the Coconut Farmers and Industry Trust Fund", Providing for Its Management, Utilization, and For Other Purposes.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 22.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we elect the following for the Bi-Canal Conference Committee on House Bill Number 5745, The Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Trust Fund Act and Senate Bill Number 1233, The Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Act, named as follows: Representative Josetti Pangariban Jr., Representative Sharon Esgarin, Representative Celso Eslobrigat, Representative Manuel T. Sagarbaria, Representative Edsel Silagman, Representative Angelina Tan, Representative Cecilia Leonila Chavez, Representative Evelina Escudero, Representative Arthur Yap, Representative Danilo Suarez, and Majority Leader Rando G. Andaya Jr.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8110 as contained in Committee Report 824 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 8110, An Act Mandating the Philippine Overseas Employment Administration to Develop, Publish, Disseminate, and Update a Handbook on the Rights and Responsibilities of Migrant Workers, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 8042, otherwise known as the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995, as amended by Republic Act Number 10022.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Jess Manalo from the Ancla Partilis to sponsor the measure.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Honorable Manalo is recognized to sponsor the bill. Please proceed.
Uh, Madam Speaker, I move that, uh, I have the distinct honor to sponsor House Bill 8100 which amends the, um, Workers Act that will now require a handbook for all our OFWs so that they can have a pre-departure handbook that will determine their rights, uh, their, uh, their, their personal information so that this could also give them the, the programs that are available for them under existing laws such as financial literacy and this would in, in one way conform with the ASEAN consensus to, for the protection and promotion of the rights of migrant workers signed last 14th November of 2017. This, Madam Speaker, shall ensure that our workers will be able to have a easy reference everywhere they go when they depart for a foreign land to seek out employment.
Thank you. Honorable Manalo, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of debate.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wish to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of, of termination of debate and spons, and interpolation.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of individual amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we terminate the period of committee amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
I move that we approve House Bill Number 8110 on second reading.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. All those in favor of House Bill 8110, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8110 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that under the calendar of business, we consider House Bill Number 1700 as contained in Committee Report 837 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 1700, An Act Granting the Overseas Philippine Workers the Right to Equal Protection and Money Claims, amending for the purpose the fifth paragraph of Section 10 of Republic Act Number 8042, as amended by Republic Act Number 10022.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that you recognize Jess, Representative Jess Manalo of Ancla Partilis to sponsor the measure.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Honorable Manalo is recognized. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, my dear colleagues, good afternoon. House Bill 1700 seeks to put into legislation the Supreme Court's landmark decision in Serano versus Gallant Maritime Services and Marlow Navigation. This would put to rest the issue that all our OFWs shall be paid the unexpired portion of their term if they are terminated during their contractual uh, period of employment. This would now in effect amend Section 10 of RA 8042 which limits only the three-month labor wage that they are entitled to. This is a recognition to give more rights to our OFW so that they will be paid the full unexpired portion of their salaries in case of unlawful termination. This, Madam Speaker, will again benefit our OFWs and assure them that they will be paid due to an illegal termination while they are working abroad. With this, Madam Speaker, I move that this bill be considered.
Thank you, Honorable Manalo, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that you open the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of individual amendments.
Any objections? Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we terminate the committee amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 1700.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
I have no objection.
Madam Speaker, I reiterate my motion, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 1700.
Well taken, Majority Floor Leader, I have already approved your motion. Now, all those in favors, please say of House Bill 1700, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 1700 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations, Majority Floor Leader.
I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Congressman Leopoldo Batawil of the Second District of Pagasinan and the guests of Congressman Tof de Venesia, the barangay officials of barangay Paul Mangatrem of Pagasinan, headed by Captain Julius Cruz and Josephine Escanyo, and also by the barangay Kagawad, barangay treasurer and secretary and SK Chairman Mac Eric Mari.
Please rise to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives, the guests of Kong Batawil and Kong Tof de Venesia. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move that we take up and consider House Bill Number 7820 as contained in Committee Report 776 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the said bill.
House Bill 7820, An Act Granting Survivorship Benefits to the Dependent Children of a Deceased Retired Member of the Commission on Audit, Civil Service Commission, Commission Elections, and the Ombudsman who is a solo parent or the surviving parents or nominated persons of such deceased retiree, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 10084 entitled "An Act Granting Survivorship Benefits to the Surviving Legitimate Spouse of a Deceased Retired Member of the Commission Audit, Civil Service Commission, Commission Elections, and the Ombudsman, and for Other Purposes."
Majority Leader.
I move that we recognize Representative Jesus Sackdalan from the First District of North Cotobato for his sponsorship speech.
The, the Honorable Sackdalan is now recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Madam Chair, uh, I move, I move that, uh, to get the support of this August body for the approval of, uh, the House Bill Number 7820.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wish to introduce individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we terminate the period of committee amendments.
Is there no objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 7820.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 7820 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8, sorry. 7820 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
I move that we suspend session, Madam Speaker.
Motion is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8204 as contained in Committee Report Number 850. Copies of these have been distributed to the members in accordance with the rules. I therefore request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is requested to read the title of said bill.
House Bill 8204, An Act Redefining the Crime of Game Fixing and Prescribing Stiffer Penalties Therefore.
Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that the author, one of the authors of the said bill, the Honorable Enrico Pineda of One Pacman Partilis, be recognized to sponsor the measure.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Honorable Pineda is now recognized to sponsor said bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, may I request that the exploratory note on House Bill 8204 be accepted as my sponsorship speech?
Majority Leader?
We so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the period of interpolation is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the period of amendments is now open. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill Number 8204. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 8204 on second reading. All those in favor, please say "aye." All those against, say "nay." The ayes have it, House Bill Number 8204 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The privilege hour is now open. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that the lady from the Gabriela Partilis, the Honorable Arlene Brosas, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Brosas is now recognized for her privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Kami ang among mga kasilingan, ang among tuyo, diliman parte sa Baguio, parte man ni sa quarry. Ngang ang among ginapangayo, nga stop sang Aposemex ang quarry sa Tibuok Naga. Amon ni ang amon ginapangayo, bisan imo sila pangutahan on tanan. And the crowd erupted in approval. Sheila Ebalye went after Gulya. Madam Speaker, I stand on a matter of personal and collective privilege to urge this chamber to stand with Sheila Ebalye, call for an end of Aposemex Quarry in Cebu, and hold DNR Secretary Sumatu accountable for the death of the 72 individuals. I fear for my safety now that they are looking for me. I was first alerted when the security personnel from Aposemex were looking for me. Have I committed any wrongdoing? I only expressed what is true, said Sheila Ebalye. Mahigit isang linggo matapos ng matapang na paninindigan ni Sheila Ebalye at paglalahad ng paninindigan ng komunidad sa pagpatigil sa quarry sa harap ni President Duterte noong dumalaw ito sa Apo Quarrying Landslide Evacuation Center. Ang babae ngayon ay nagtatago at nangangamba para sa buhay nito. Instead of addressing the community's concern, Duterte simply joked at her and tagging her as a well-trained by the New People's Army. Because of this, Ebalye was forced to seek refuge in a religious organization to protect her security after facing intimidation and harassment from security personnel of Aposemex Corporation a day after the dialogue. Gabriela is one with a call to protect and defend Sheila Ebalye from all-out attacks of President Rodrigo Duterte on women, civilians, and activists, along with Aposemex management's attempt to silence the demands of the people affected in calamities through harassment and intimidation. In times of calamities, women and their children are among the sectors most vulnerable to different kinds of human rights violations, including hunger, intimidation, threat, harassment, sexual assault, rape, and even death. Hence, women in the community play a vital role in the recovery process through putting forward legitimate demands that enable government actions. Ngunit ang macho pasistang pamumuno ni Duterte ay hindi lamang enabler ng panggahasa at eksplitasyon sa mga kababaihan, sa pamamagitan ng mga sexist statements nito. Ito din ay pumapayag sa panggahasa at eksplitasyon ng kalikasan sa pagpapayag sa operasyon ng foreign mining companies dala ng neoliberal na polisiya nito. Under the macho fascist rule of Duterte, women like Sheila Ebalye, who speak not only for herself, but also for the welfare of the community, are branded with names and labels to silence their legitimate demands. Ang administrasyon ni Duterte ay takot na ang matatapang na boses na naranawagan ng hustisya ng mga kababaihan kagaya ni Sheila ay babasag sa ilusyon at maghahayag ng pagka-inutil ng gobyerno sa pagtugon sa mga krisis kagaya ng Sanaga City, Cebu. Gabriela condemns Duterte's policies that put premium on capitalist greed and environment plunder over the welfare of the community and its people. Inuuna ng administrasyong ito ang pagkaganit sa kita at isinaaalang-alang ang kapakanan ng komunidad. Duterte prioritizes profit over people when he appointed the war monger Military General Frank Sumatu as DNR Secretary over former Secretary Gina Lopez. The Duterte-nomics neoliberal policies opened the gates for mining and quarrying plunderers like Apaland Quarry Corporation to exploit the natural resources of the community for the benefit of profit while leaving the immediate community impoverished and deprived of the government's basic social services. We seek accountability from the Apaland Quarry Corporation, which despite the increasing debt toll due to their large-scale quarrying operations and the DNR order to indefinitely ban of quarrying operations in Central Visayas, continue to operate their cement plants located in other regions of the country. The DNR and the Mines and Geoscience Bureau Agency must also be held accountable in allowing exploitative mining and quarrying operations to proliferate in communities, not just in Cebu, but also in other regions in the Philippines, especially in Mindanao, where indigenous peoples are driven away by the armed forces of the Philippines and its paramilitary. We sustain that genuine development is geared towards the protection of lives and the environment, not its destruction through foreign and capitalist environment plunder. Justice to all survivors of the Apo Quarrying Landslide. Stop the environmental plunder. Stop Apo Quarrying. Hold Aposemex accountable. Hold Duterte U DNR Secretary Sumatu accountable. Magandang hapon po, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader? Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the privilege speech, I move that we refer the speech to committee on rules.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Bernadette Herrera D of BH Party List to avail of the Privilege Hour.
The Honorable Bernadette Herrera D is now recognized for her privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to all my colleagues and all our guests. It is an honor for me to stand before all of you to deliver a privileged speech in line with the celebration of the International Day of the Girl on October 11. I would like to acknowledge that yesterday, we had with us young people from Magindanao, Llanau del Sur, the National Capital Region, and representatives from Oxfam, Al Muhadila Development Foundation, United Youth of the Philippines Women, PBSV, YPEER Philippines, Barangay Kuliat Verlani Foundation, Pasa Youth Development Office, and the College of St. Benild Center for Social Action, who are also here to celebrate this occasion with us. Seven years ago, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution designating October 11 as the International Day of the Girl. This celebration aims to highlight and address the unique needs and challenges of girls and also to promote girls' empowerment and the fulfillment of their human rights. As an active member of the Philippine Legislators Committee on Population and Development, or PLCPD, a non-government organization advocating for human development legislation, and together with my fellow legislator members, we are committed to ensure that everyone, adult and children, regardless of their sexual orientation, gets an equal opportunity towards an improved quality of life. And as a woman and children's rights advocate, I ensure that this includes the promotion, protection, and fulfillment of women and children's rights and welfare. The celebration of the International Day of the Girl provides us an avenue to discuss several issues of girls, such as education, equality, access to sexual and reproductive health information and services, and child marriage. Child marriage is a fundamental human rights violation which has negative impacts on girls' health and development. It denies a girl of her childhood, disrupts her education, limits her opportunities, increases her risk of violence and abuse, and poses risks to her health. Child marriage also denies both girls and boys the right to choose when and whom to marry, a decision that should be made freely. To reiterate the impacts of child marriage, according to UNFPA, nine out of 10 adolescent births are vulnerable to pregnancy-related complications, which are among the leading causes of death among adolescent girls aged 15 to 19. According to UNICEF, women and girls' development is hindered by child marriage as married girls are most likely to drop out of school and lose the chance to gain skills and knowledge, which will help her gain a good job and earn for herself and her family. To present you with data and studies on child marriage, let's zoom in on several reports and studies. According to the 2016 State of the World's Population Report of UNFPA, 47,000 girls around the world are married before the age of 18 every day. In the Philippines, 15% of women aged 20 to 24 years old were first married or in union before 18. And according to 2017 State of the World's Jordan of UNICEF, the Philippines ranked 12 in the countries with highest absolute numbers of child marriage. Child marriage can be prevented. The WHO set recommendations to help address child marriage. This includes a call for policymakers to put in place and enforce laws that prohibit marriage before the age of 18. A need to increase education opportunities for girls as this has positive effects on their health and also decreases the chance of getting married. A need to work with all stakeholders, cultural and traditional leaders, communities, and parents to increase their awareness of the negative impacts of child marriage and change norms around it. This information about the prevalence and negative impacts of child marriage creates an urgent need for our action. We as legislators must ensure that we abide with several international commitments we ratified that explicitly prohibits child marriage, such as the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, the Convention on the Rights of the Child. We must also ensure the full implementation of national laws that protect women and girls from child marriage, such as the Family Code of the Philippines, Magna Carta for Women, and the Special Protection of Children Against Abuse, Exploitation, and Discrimination. These laws must explicitly prohibit child marriage in all settings. We should also harmonize all legal systems, civil, criminal, family, and customary to ensure that child marriage is prohibited. Thus, together with stakeholders and allies, we believe that there is an urgent need for a national law explicitly prohibiting child marriage and providing programs and services for prevention and response to ensure that all Filipino children, boys, and especially girls will have the opportunity to grow and develop their full potential and the chance to decide when and with whom to marry. Just yesterday morning, youth advocates in the gallery had a productive dialogue with legislators and expressed their support for a law that will finally address the end of child marriage. And we legislators heed the voices of the young people who are the key affected population. You have my commitment that I will contribute to ushering this bill in the legislative mill. This year's theme of the International Day of the Girl celebration is, "With Her, A Skilled Girl Force." Girls have untapped potential which can contribute to healthy, peaceful, and productive communities. When girls have the opportunity to enjoy their childhood, receive quality education with equipment, knowledge, and skills, and have their rights and welfare highlighted and protected, they will grow as empowered women who can take care of themselves, the people around them, their society, and our nation. If we address child marriage, girls will be empowered to develop to their full potential. Just imagine what an empowered girl can do. Let us work together and create spaces for girls to grow as empowered women. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ochenza for his interpolation.
The lady...
The Honorable Ochenza is now recognized.
The youngest woman Bernadette Herrera just delivered a very, very up, meaningful privileged speech. But I don't think there was enough members on the floor who learned from her message. So, we move for adjournment.
Session is suspended.
We move for adjournment. You cannot suspend one night. There is a motion to adjourn, and we do not have enough members anymore on the floor. It's time to call it a day. Anong gagawin natin dito? Mapatayong dalawampati marito ngayon. Anyway, I assure you.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Bernadette Herrera D to the Committee on Rules. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion to refer the speech of the Honorable Bernadette Herrera D to the appropriate committee or the Committee on Rules is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend the Privilege Hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading. House Bill Number 8400, as contained in Committee Report Number 891.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary-General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 8400, establishing the fiscal regime for the mining industry.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, the Honorable Estridita B. Swan Sing of the... of the First District of Nueva Ecija to sponsor the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Honorable Swan Sing is now recognized for her sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, the Sanguisco lives in this August Hall. I rise today to sponsor House Bill Number 8400, which seeks to establish the fiscal regime for the mining industry. Based on the data of the Department of Finance, the government collected total taxes, fees, and royalties from the mining industry in the amount of 32.76 billion in 2014, 30.07 billion in 2015, and 33.43 billion in 2016. In terms of revenues, the mining industry has merely accounted for no more than 0.26% of the GDP in 2014 and was reduced to 0.23% both in 2015 and 2016. Presently, for large mines, mining contracts offer varying fiscal regimes and therefore fiscal burden is differentiated. The fiscal regime depends on whether the mine is operating in a mineral reservation and whether the mine is operated under a mineral production sharing agreement or financial and technical assistance agreement. To date, almost all mining contracts are under MPSA, while those in mineral reservations are composed mainly of nickel mines. All FTAA agreements are for mines outside mineral reservations. Under this measure, there is no more distinction on whether mining exploration is conducted outside or inside a mineral reservation and whether it is large-scale or small-scale. Equity dictates that fiscal burden should be shared equally by all who explore the natural resources of the country. It provides the following structural changes in the fiscal regime that will govern the mining industry by imposing a 3% royalty tax on large-scale mining operations located within the mining industry. Within mining reservation areas, a margin-based royalty tax on large-scale mining operations outside mining reservations, ranging from 1% to 5%, as the case may be. A royalty tax on small-scale mining operations equivalent to 1/10 of 1% of gross output. The term royalty is based on the concept of jury regalia or regalian doctrine, which dictates that all lands of public domain, waters, minerals, and other natural resources belong to the state. As such, the state should be compensated for the extraction of minerals. Likewise, the state has the duty to assure that the public will benefit from the extraction by others of its natural resources, primarily in the form of taxes, which can increase government income and address externalities resulting from mining operations. The bill also introduces the right of the state to share in the enjoyment of windfall profit. This share is separate and distinct from the usual taxes, duties, and fees paid, which are exactions by the state arising from its taxing power. And so, in addition to taxes and royalty, a margin-based tax on windfall profits gained from the mining operations, ranging from 1% to 10%, is imposed. As an additional safety net to ensure that the state weeps what is due, it as owner of mineral wealth, a provision on limitation of interest expense deductions is incorporated. The amount of tax the government collects will depend on the amount of profit a mining company declares. The higher its debt, the higher is the amount of interest it pays, and therefore, the lower will be its taxable profit. This much-needed legislation also ensures that mining companies are exempt from the application of the confidentiality clauses of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended in order to comply with the requirements of the Extractive Industries Transparency Initiative or EITI of the government. At this juncture, may I urge my esteemed colleagues in August Chamber to support the immediate enactment of the significant legislation into law. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, honorable legislators.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8400, as contained in Committee Report Number 891. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar business for the day, I move that we take up House Resolution Number 2214 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said resolution. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said resolution.
House Resolution Number 2214, Resolution Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives and the Family of Seriaco Akoi Escalalang, Kabayan Party List Representative during the 17th Congress.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt... I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 2214 in consolidation with House Resolution Numbers 2195, 2196, and 2203. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Gary Alejano, a party list Magdaló, to deliver his privileged speech.
The Honorable Gary Alejano is now recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, to our distinguished colleagues. Magandang hapon po. I stand on the issue of personal and collective privilege on the need to strengthen and promote traditional and alternative medicine in the country. In 1997, then-President Ramos signed Republic Act Number 8423, or the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act. Traditional medicine is defined by the World Health Organization as the sum total of the knowledge, skills, and practices based on the theories, beliefs, and experiences indigenous to different cultures, whether explicable or not, used in the maintenance of health as well as in the prevention, diagnosis, improvement, or treatment of physical and mental illnesses. According to the World Health Organization's Fact Sheet, more than 80% of the world's population depends on herbal medicine for health care. The Philippines has several traditional health care methods and with more than 1,000 plant species that are believed to have medicinal properties, the enactment of RA8423 opened many doors of opportunities. Republic Act 8423 aims to improve the quality and delivery of health care services to the Filipino people through the development of the traditional and alternative health care and its integration into the national health care delivery system. Likewise, Republic Act 8423 intends to promote and be able to provide an array of affordable, accessible, and effective traditional and complementary alternative health care options for our people to choose from. This act gave birth to the Philippine Institute of Traditional Alternative Health Care, or the PTA, of Department of Health, which is designated to be in partnership with practitioners of traditional and complementary alternative health care modalities and to vigorously pursue the implementation of this policy. To further aid in the promotion of alternative medicine in the country, then-President, now-Speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo issued Proclamation Number 694, Series of 2004, declaring the month of November, which is next month, as Traditional and Alternative Health Month. The proclamation stated that there are about 2,000 medicinal plants in the Philippines and there's a need to accelerate the research and development of these plants for medical use. In addition, the Department of Labor and Employment encourages the development of herbal medicine as a source of livelihood. In its Balik Pinay, Balik Hanabuai program, the agency encourages returning overseas workers to start a home-based business, including herbal medicines and food supplements. Likewise, the Department of Health was quoted in Manila Bulletin on November 7, 2016, stating that "The annual observation of Traditional and Alternative Health Care Month seeks to heighten the public awareness of the availability and accessibility of traditional and complementary medicine and treatment and educates the public on how to get the best benefit from the TNCM that make use of medicinal and pharmacological properties of herbal plants and other natural products which abundantly thrive in the Philippines." While all these events and activities suggest the overwhelming support of the government in promoting and developing traditional and alternative medicine in the country, recent events led by the Food and Drug Authority presents discrepancies with regard to intention of Republic Act Number 8423 and how the government is supposed to be promoting natural medicine. On August 17, the Food and Drug Administration shut down the Dr. Farah Agustin Ban's Natural Medical Center in Victoria, Tarlac. The center was closed for allegedly selling unregistered health products. Dr. Farah Agustin Ban is a well-known licensed medical doctor who specializes in alternative, natural, and affordable treatments to persons afflicted with advanced cancers and other serious ailments. She graduated from St. Louis University in Baguio City with a degree in medicine. Is PRC licensed and has received significant international training in her field. In 2015, just three years ago, Dr. Farah and her husband founded the Dr. Farah Agustin Ban's Natural Medical Center with the goal of enhancing her practice as a physician, increasing her ability and capacity to service ill and dying persons from all over the country using natural medicine. The center is not a hospital, given the lack of emergency services and laboratories, nor does it have specialized machines and equipment, but is simply an outpatient clinic where patients can go for free consultations and treatment for their afflictions. There, Dr. Farah manufactures just enough of her herbal products known as Dr. Farah's Boston C and Vitamin C and others which are specially reserved for administered and dispensed to her patients and not the public at large. She received a license to operate Number LTO 30000247997 for the manufacture of these health products, which were eventually applied for registration with the FDA, not to mention having undergone significant testing at a laboratory accredited by the Department of Health, the Department of Science and Technology, the University of the Philippines, and St. Luke's Medical Center. In spite of all this, there have been inexplicable delays regarding FDA approval. The Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Health Care, or PTA, invited Dr. Farah to have her facility be the showcase for natural medicine in the country and even host a residency program for natural medicine. Dr. Farah's treatment facility was patronized by patients from all over the country and elsewhere, received popular support from notable personalities such as the appointed and elected officials, celebrities, and even royalty. Her treatments have gained notoriety all over the world with many patients flying in daily from North America and Europe. Dr. Farah gained a social media following numbering millions and became the largest employer in her municipality. On April 10, 2018, the Presidents of the Philippine College of Physicians, Philippine Rheumatology Association, Philippine Society of Medical Oncology, Philippine Society for Microbiology and Infection Diseases, as well as the Philippine Society of Nephrology filed a complaint with Health Secretary Duque through the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau of the DOH about alleged misconduct by Dr. Farah in relation to the activities her treatment facility. No evidence nor aggrieved parties were presented. Again, on May 4, 2018, these same medical society presidents filed a similar complaint with FDA against Dr. Farah. No evidence nor aggrieved parties were again presented. This was the only time in 16 years of medical practice or in the treatment of over 100,000 patients that Dr. Farah ever faced a professional or legal complaint regarding practice as a doctor. On June 4, 2018, Dr. Farah responded to the DOH complaint and argued that the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau and DOH do not have jurisdiction over her and also have no jurisdiction over outpatient clinics like her treatment facility. On June 11, 2018, Regional Office 3 of the DOH agreed with Dr. Farah and rendered a decision dismissing the DOH complaint for lack of jurisdiction. On July 24, 2018, the Director of the Food and Drug Administration issued a summons with Preventive Measure Order, or SPMO, directing Dr. Farah to submit an answer to the FDA complaint within 10 days from receipt of notice. On July 27, 2018, Dr. Farah received the SPMO with the FDA complaint in her treatment facility, which was served by the FDA through its regulatory enforcement unit. The summons provided that Dr. Farah had 10 days from receipt, which is July 27, 2018, or until August 6, 2018, to file an answer to the FDA complaint. On August 6, 2018, Dr. Farah, with assistance of counsel, personally filed her answer to the FDA complaint, which was stamped, received, and provided with an acknowledgement receipt by the FDA in Alabang. Surprisingly, on August 8, 2018, the Director of FDA rendered a decision for the FDA complaint and imposed upon Dr. Farah penalties of an administrative fine amounting to more than a million, permanent revocation of her license to operate in the padlaking of several areas of her treatment facility. The basis for the closure was that Dr. Farah had not submitted an answer to the FDA summons, but actually she did. On August 17, 2018, at the precise moment, Dr. Farah was receiving an award at Club Filipino in Manila for her contributions to science and medicine. The REU, together with 10 media people and nearly 50 heavily armed officers of the Criminal Investigation and Detection Group of the Philippine National Police, personnel from the local government units of the Tarlac Province and Municipality of Victoria, Tarlac, served a copy of the decision dated August 8, 2018, of Director General of FDA in Dr. Farah's treatment facility, and proceeded to seize and confiscate her health products, seal the structures therein, and install closure signages within the compound all the same as also where she resides. Clearly, Dr. Farah was deprived of her right to due process. Dr. Farah was able to submit her response to the FDA on August 6, 2018, well within the 10-day period that the FDA afforded her to file her reply. FDA completely disregarded the defenses and arguments raised by Dr. Farah and her councils. What is the reason for the extraordinary haste of the FDA in writing their decision? Did the FDA knowingly ignore the defense and arguments that Dr. Farah submitted? The hasty decision made the FDA neglected the rights of Dr. Farah to due process. It likewise denied Dr. Farah her right to practice her profession and to earn a living. But more importantly, the decision deprived many of our countrymen access to alternative sources of medicine as promised by Republic Act Number 8423. On August 20, 2018, Dr. Farah filed a motion for reconsideration with FDA of the decision dated August 8, 2018, arguing that her right to due process was violated since he filed an answer to the FDA complaint that was not considered in the resolution of the FDA. Again, on August 29, 2018, Dr. Farah filed an urgent motion requesting the FDA to resolve her motion for reconsideration dated August 20, 2018. On October 4, after 44 days and daily follow-ups by Dr. Farah's councils, the FDA answered the MR, but they maintained the oppressive and erroneous decision. They refused to admit that there is no pharmacy inside the facility and maintained the 500,000 fine it imposed for operating a pharmacy without a license and 72,000 for each day of operation. The center has no pharmacy, Madam Speaker. What it does have is a pharmacy, which is spelled as F-A-R-M-A-C-Y, farm, masi, or a central supply center or supply room which dispenses food and herbs. Also, FDA did not even acknowledge its patent error in its decision stating that Dr. Farah Natural Medical Center did not answer even if it did within the prescribed period of 10 days. Finally, FDA insists that the center has no pending application, which is false. It can also be noted that Sanofi Pasteur, the company behind the Dingvaxia vaccine, was only imposed a 100,000 administrative fine and suspension of its sale of the vaccine for a year, while Dr. Farah was meted out with the penalty amount... for a year while Dr. Farah was meted out with a penalty amounting to more than a million pesos and permanent revocation of her license to operate, only for allegedly not providing an answer, which is a technical process within 10-day period that was given them. The actions made by FDA not only prolongs the great uncertainty and hardship faced by the concern, especially Dr. Farah in terms of her right to practice her profession, but also, and more importantly, the right of the people who patronize Dr. Farah to choose the medical professionals and treatments they wish. While we recognize the mandate of the FDA to ensure that products peddled in the market are safe and of good quality and efficacy, we should also recognize the right of our countrymen to have access to affordable but effective traditional indigenous healthcare option backed by science as advocated by the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act. In this regard, I urge the upper grade committee of this August chamber to review the implementation of Republic Act Number 8423 in order to propose amendments that would improve and hasten the registration of products of alternative medicine advocates in our country and also in consideration of the case of Dr. Farah Agustin Bonch in order to strengthen the promotion of traditional indigenous alternative medicine in the country. Without Madam Speaker, maraming salamat po at magadang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now recognize the Honorable Anthony Bravo of COOP Natco for his interpellation.
The Honorable Bravo is now recognized for his interpellation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to our distinguished colleague. Will the distinguished representative of Bartlist Magalo yield to some question for this representation?
This representation is willing to accept questions from Honorable Bravo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, your honor. Just one information of my distinguished colleague. Two months ago, I was able to travel with a group to China and I've seen for myself how the government of China embraced alternative medicine. And in fact, I was able to visit at least three manufacturing companies for in huge money was infused by the government as far as research in manufacturing of alternative medicine. In the same manner, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, alternative medicine in China had been there, not just 500 years, but more than 500 years. And we have this law promoting alternative medicine in the country, but I don't know where are we here heading as far as Republic Act 8423 is concerned. The issue at hand that is being raised by the distinguished colleague, Madam Speaker, brought some controversies involving the Department of Health and its attached agency, IFDA. Distinguished sponsor, IFDA compliance letter, because I was able to come across personnel from IFDA when this issue was raised during the budget hearing. And they said that a compliance letter was issued against Dr. Farah, which includes operating a health establishment without a valid license to operate. Is she not violating the law?
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, Honorable Bravo, as I've stated in my privileged speech, the center of Dr. Farah is an outpatient clinic, which does not require a license to operate from the Department of Health. In fact, the decision of the DOH on the complaints filed to them, they affirm that kind of findings that the clinic of Dr. Farah is not a hospital and therefore not within the jurisdiction of the Department of Health. So hindi po siya hospital.
Further, distinguished sponsor, the personnel of IFDA informed this representation that the IFDA Registration Enforcement Unit found out that Dr. Farah was operating as a pharmacy on the premise without a license, so therefore they are covered by IFDA. Is this correct?
Come again, distinguished Honorable Bravo.
The IFDA Registration Enforcement Unit, distinguished sponsor, had reported that Dr. Farah was operating as a pharmacy. So if so, he's covered by IFDA.
Madam Speaker, distinguished Honorable Bravo, it is unreasonable to require a different and separate license to operate for Dr. Farah since she offers no pharmaceutical products at all. Yung sa kanya po, yung central supply room lang, kung saan merong food products, not drug products, and she possesses that license to operate as food manufacturer and not a drug manufacturer. The operation of central supply room for food products for the sole use and benefit of the patients of Dr. Farah is but a natural consequence of and strictly linked to the limited manufacturing of food by her and the medical center. To claim otherwise is not logical, Honorable Bravo, Madam Speaker. This is because while Dr. Farah is allowed to manufacture food, she would not be authorized to reasonably dispose of it. It's just food. This would lead to the situation where the food manufactured by Dr. Farah is left idle, open to expiration, and worse, unavailable to be given to sick and dying patients at the medical center. In fact, it makes no sense at all to penalize a person for not registering their products when they were not only granted authority to actually manufacture of these food products, but it's also still being evaluated. At the time that they were closed down, they had applied to the FDA for this kind of food supplement.
Thank you for that clarification, your honor, Madam Speaker. So does it mean that you are giving impression to this body that the report in fact is not true or misleading?
Well, that's the information I received, Madam Speaker, Honorable Bravo. In fact, the FDA Enforcement Unit rating teams report, and the report stated that the pharmacy was not padlocked because there was no drug found in them. So wala pong drug, sayo walang pinapadlock.
Was there any complaint filed by the client or patients of the said Dr. Farah? A such initiative was made to investigate and close establishment?
In fact, in my privileged speech earlier, ang nag-file ng complaints ay mga presidentin ng different medical associations, na limang medical associations, and there was no complaint, a single complaint from a patient na kung saan ay nasaktan sila, nagkasakit sila, unamatay dahil sa panggagamot ni Dr. Farah. So that means hindi po totoo ang sinasabi na merong nasaktan dahil pag meron sa proseso ng FDA, na kung merong complaint sa mga produkto, na mga supplement o gamot, eh meron kang prosesong dinadaanan. Dapat mag-apply, merong form na dapat applyan mo, i-stake mo doon, i-fill up and ipirmahan, at dapat may proseso na i-imbestigahan ng person from IFDA. This did not happen at all, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, I really wonder why this is happening? There was no complainant at all? And what trigger for them to close establishment?
Sa pagkakaintindi ko, Madam Speaker, Honorable Bravo, technical issue lama. Hindi nakapagsubmit ng sagot within the 10-day required period of the complaints, the same complaint that was dismissed by the Department of Health and also by the reason that allegedly they're selling drug products. Now, in reality, nag-aapply po sila ng food supplement. Gusto ko lang bigyan ng background po. When I was briefed with this, because I have so many constituents asking for my help, they're the patients of Dr. Farah. Ang application po ng food supplement na sinabit sa FDA, nakalagay doon na yung content na Vitamin C is 160%. So ang sabi ng FDA, eh hindi po ito dahil sobra ito ng 150% as the recommended energy and nutritional intake. So ang ginawa po ng grupo ni Dr. Farah, binaba ng 150. Ngayon, nung nag-comply na sila, at pinakita in fact sa shelves ng ating mga stores and groceries, makikita natin doon na even mga Vitamin C juices and products merong 200%, 250%, but they were not classified as drugs. So therefore, medyo oppression yun na ito is specific sa kanya na 150% eh hindi siya in approve. Nung naapprove yung kanyang contents on 150%, ang nilagay naman doon, hindi ba ito gamot dahil nilagay mo Dr. Farah? So tingin ko hindi rin, dahil nakita ko rin sa kanila ang reasoning in their exchanges sa application, maraming mga produkto that contain the name doctor. Now, because Dr. Farah is a doctor, so she has to put there Dr. Farah. So doon si mga ibang mga produkto, example, sulfur zinc oxide, Dr. Kofman. Bakit pinayagan ito ng IFDA? Doon sa doctors' schools, liquid corn calus remover, pinayagan din ito. Meron ding Dr. Nutri, this is green coffee mix, pinayagan, may doctor din naman. So nung yan ay binigay na rason, sinabi pa, bakit nakalagay dito doctor recommended? Therefore, this is a drug product. Madam Speaker, Honorable Bravo, maraming produkto po ang naglalagay niya, in fact, doon sa isang tubig na produkto nakalagay doon, recommended by doctors. So it's just wording, Honorable Bravo. At the end of the day, in a comply Jose requirements, and I cannot just understand the harsh decision of IFDA if they tried to comply with the requirements. I've learned that Dr. Farah came from abroad and she decided to go home in order to help the Filipino people and, you know, she achieved so much in terms of research, in terms of development of alternative medicine. I asked Department of Health, in fact, during the budget hearing, kung anong estado ng ating alternative medicines. Ang PITAC nagbigay ng napakahabang litanya ng accomplishment ng PITAC, in fact, resource person pa nila sa Dr. Farah. And why is it na very harsh ang treatment ang IFDA when it comes to the, you know, application of Dr. Farah to the point of even revoking her license to operate? Honorable Bravo.
Thank you, distinguished colleague. Madam Speaker, you know, our intention of scrutinizing or doing such inspection on establishment is to assure, among others, that if a such establishment exists or giving services, we are assuring that public is safe. It includes the report, because it is included in the report of FDA, that this establishment is prescribing inappropriate health products which allegedly cause worsening condition of the patients and in fact citing some death incidents. That's why I'm worried. Is this really true? Because it's part of the report.
Well, again, I'm not questioning the report, but let us make sense of that report. There was no complainant. It should be specific who is or who are the victims, ano nangyari sa kanila, and katulad po sa dibati natin sa Dengvaxia, nagkaruntay ng hearing siya Dengvaxia. Bago ang allegation is that namamatay itong mga batang naturukan ng Dengvaxia. Pero hindi automatic na sila ay namatay kaagad dahil naturukan sila. You have to go through the process of determining whether the substance of Dengvaxia caused the death of the patient. In this case, Madam Speaker, Honorable Bravo, paano malalaman na itong mga sinasabi, ito wala pang pangalan na walang complainant, paano malalaman that they died because of the food supplements administered by Dr. Farah? Walang ang laboratory examination or whatsoever na ginawa to say that the Boston C or Vitamin C offered by Dr. Farah was the cause of such death?
So meaning, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the report that is being shown to public is quite not reflecting the truth, which supposed to be giving us an impression that it's a semblance of fake news, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Well, Madam Speaker, I agree with that because I believe that we need to have a comprehensive committee hearing on this so that we can ferret out the truth. Because my concern, Madam Speaker and Honorable Bravo, is that aside from the injustice, aside from, you know, the violation of laws and processes, this certain situation discourages scientists, discourages doctors that conduct research on alternative medicine. This is actually encouraged in our country. The fact that we pass Republic Act 84, what's this, 8423 recognizes the fact that, you know, there are so many medicinal plants in the country that can provide cure to the problems. Alamho natin, pag may sakit kalalo na kanser, hindi naman mayaman lahat. Ang daming mahirap na Pilipino, ang kanser ay hindi lamang sakit ng mayaman, sakit din ang mahirap. Ngayon, kung pupunta ka sa mga doctors, na napakamahal ang mga treatments, bayad professional, at ang gamot na binibigay ay napakamahal, it is but understandable na pupunta ho sila sa alternative medicine dahil wala mo silang kakayanan. Ngayon, nire-regulate natin ang alternative medicine para hindi naman ho sila mapahamak. Ngayon ho, iniincarry natin ang research. Tama o 'yung sinabi ni Honorable Bravo kanina, in China, herbal medicine traces its roots thousands of years ago, in China, infect up to now, sa Kyapo, napakarami yan.
At hindi sinasara? Kung meron ho sa Kyapo, meron bang ginawang investigasyon at naisara?
Yun din ang dapat nating malaman because so far in my own investigation, eh parang wala ho tayong narinig. Una, hindi lamang sa Kyapo, sa Green Hills, when I went there, may nakita din ako mga products na ganon. So for me, Madam Speaker and Honorable Bravo, we should create an atmosphere conducive for our scientists to create and develop medicines for our sick people. Hindi yung prohibitive yung process natin, at alamho natin yung findings natin sa issue ng Dengvaxia, labanan ito ng malalaking pharmaceutical companies. Even on the issue of, you know, development of alternative viewers, maghahanap ka ng alternative na ginagawa ng ating mga scientist, hindi po nabibigyan ng support. Why? Ang lakas ng lobby ng oil companies, mawawalan sila ng pagbebenta. Ito rin sa alternative medicine, mawawalan din ang benta ang malalaking pharmaceutical companies. And therefore, tayong representative should side with the interest of the Filipino people, not with the profits of big pharmaceutical companies.
Balikan ko lang ho, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, ang pagpapakasarang establishment, dumaan ba ng tamang proseso? Meaning, kung merong nagcomplaint o merong findings ang isang agency ng gobyerno, maguha ipapasarang isang establishment, kailangan may prosesong daanan. At nasundan pa yun tamang proseso?
Well, sa tingin ko, Madam Speaker, Honorable Bravo, ay hindi po sila dumaan sa proseso. Una, very harsh nao eh, technical, you were not able to respond to the summons within the prescribed period, which is 10 days, but in reality, they submitted, there's a receipt, receipt copy of their response, no? And aside from that, yung sinasabing gamot na illegal daw, eh nakaproceso, nakaply sa kanila. When I asked the Director of IFDA during the budget hearing, meron bang nakapending na applications sa inyo? Sabi niya, wala. Again, I want to put that on record, Madam Speaker, Honorable Bravo, na hindi po totoo because Dr. Farah applied for the approval or accreditation of their products. So hindi nagsasabi ng totoong IFDA. And aside from that, eh parang overkill. It was reported in the news, I was able to read. It was reported in the news, I was able to read, uh, from the news, na overkill, nagdala ng napakaraming pulis, at sinara 'yung facility na yan na parang pugad na mga terrorist.
Maraming salamat to, uh, Distinguished Colleague. Madam Speaker, with that, uh, comprehensive information you've given us, this representation fully support for the conduct of investigation as provided by, uh, Distinguished Representative of Magdalo, uh, Honorable Garry Alihano. Maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Honorable Bravo, and maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Magandang apo, musulah.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other interpreters, I move that the speech of, uh, the Honorable Garry Alihano and the, uh, interpretation thereof be referred to the Committee on Rules. So, move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The motion to refer the speech of the Honorable Garry Alihano to the appropriate committee is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move to recognize the Honorable Savior Jesus Romualdo of the Lone District of Camigin to avail of the privilege hour. So, move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The Honorable Romualdo is now recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, dear colleagues, guests, ladies and gentlemen, forty-three years ago, Presidential Decree Number 603 was issued to give due importance to our children. It called for the creation of a policymaking agency called the Council for the Welfare of Children, or CWC, whose main task is to ensure that every child enjoys his or her rights. The Board of the CWC is composed of seven line agencies, the heads of the seven line agencies, uh, the Departments of Social Welfare, Justice, Health, Interior and Local Government, Agriculture, Education, and Labor and Employment. Three coordinating agencies, namely, the National Nutrition Council, the National Economic and Development Authority, and the CWC Secretariat. The CWC is a small agency with no regional offices. It has a total staff complement of only thirty-one plantillia positions, six of which are unfilled. And under the 2018 General Appropriations Act, its budget is a mere ninety-four point eight million pesos. The CWC relies heavily on partner agencies at the sub-national levels to monitor the implementation of all significant laws on children. It is also tasked to ensure that appropriate information on children's rights reaches everyone, especially those whose primary roles are caring for and rearing these children. Madam Speaker, we are no strangers to the stories highlighted by media and the struggles faced by children who are, one, victims of sexual abuse. One example is the sexual assault of an eighteen-month-old baby deplorably encapsulated in a horrific video called "Daisy's Destruction". Two, children without parents to care for them. We see children, uh, seven-year-olds, grade-one pupils from impoverished families forced to take on the huge challenge of rearing their siblings. Number three, children affected by drugs. In Central Visayas, for example, it is alleged that almost five thousand children have admitted, have admitted to drug use. Uh, one fifteen-year-old boy was took on drugs for two years. He was also a courier and peddled drugs for top, for a top drug suspect um, in the village of Duljo Patima. He has been sober for three years now, and he is among the five thousand who need our help. Number four, children who are victims of natural and man-made disasters. In Marawi City alone, more than a hundred sixty thousand children have been accounted for as part of the affected communities. Children are the most vulnerable sectors in a society whose psychosocial well-being must be given proper attention. These children are at greater risk to trafficking, prostitution, and other forms of sexual violence, uh, exploitation, and child labor. There are even reports that children receive two hundred pesos for working seven hours a day. A multi-stakeholder approach is needed from government, non-government agencies, civil society, and international development partners to address the growing concern of Filipino children. The answer to this call for support and call to action has been tremendous, and this is a clear manifestation of the importance of putting our children in the priority executive legislative agenda of the Seventeenth Congress. In nineteen ninety, the Philippines became a state party to the Convention on Rights of the Child. In response, several laws have been enacted to respond to the plight of children based on the provisions of the UN CRC. These are various, there are various inter-agency bodies that deal with the implementation of laws on children, such as the Committee for the Special Protection of Children under Executive Order 275, the National Council on Children's Television as fixed by Republic Act Number 8370, the Early Childhood Care and Development Council as prescribed by Republic Act Number 8980, the Inter-Agency Council Against Trafficking under Republic Act Number 9208, the National Child Labor Committee as charged by Republic Act Number 9231, the Inter-Agency Council on Violence Against Women and Their Children as directed by Republic Act Number 9262, the Juvenile Justice Welfare Council, which was laid down by Republic Act Number 9344 as amended by Republic Act Number 10630, the National Council on Disability Affairs under Executive Order Number 709, and the Inter-Agency Council Against Child Pornography under Republic Act 9775. The question is, how do we ensure that government's efforts on children are not piecemeal solutions? Filipino children deserve high importance and better treatment. Let us address these gaps and give them a brighter future. As the focal inter-agency body for children, the member agencies of the CWC should have the responsibility to ensure that the policies, plans, and programs adhere to the best interests of children. This then poses another question. How can the CWC call out the different line agencies and ultimately exercise its mandate, but it is not even under the Office of the President? For the Council is currently attached to the DSWD, which is only one of the many agencies providing services for children. Although its role includes the welfare of children, the DSWD is also tasked with taking care of persons with disabilities and the elderly. Madam Speaker, we need an agency that will provide the appropriate focus on policy formulation and implementation of programs and services to ensure that the needs of children are met and their basic constitutional rights are protected. There is urgency in providing for an appropriate agency that will handle and prioritize the needs and protection of our children. And so, let us act now and appeal to the President to certify as urgent the enactment of the bill creating the Philippine Commission on Children. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpolate the Honorable Romualdo, I move that the speech of the Honorable Romualdo be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The motion to refer the speech of the Honorable Romualdo is, to the appropriate committee is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, um, I now move to recognize the Honorable Sarah Jean Ilago of the Parte Diis Kabataan to avail of the privilege hour. So, move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Ilago is now recognized for her privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This representation humbly request that my full speech, which was supposed to be delivered yesterday with student leaders from UP, PUP, Erest, FEU, UE, UST, Ateneo, and officials from the Sangguni Ang Kabataan as witnesses be entered into the records. But for tonight, Madam Speaker, I would like to instead, uh, manifest on a personal and collective privilege an excerpt from the Unity Statement of Southern Tagalog Youth and Faculty condemning the Red October conspiracy attacks on universities. This was signed by over a hundred organizations and institutions of youth leaders, parliamentarians, journalists, cultural workers, faculty, and academic employees across Southern Luzon. Madam Speaker, the manifesto reads that we, the Southern Tagalog youth and professors believe that it is absurd and even outrageous for the AFP to brand universities who are simply exercising their right to academic freedom for educational purposes as recruitment grounds for any political or armed group. These allegations endanger academic freedom, freedom of expression, as well as freedom of access to information as laid out in the UN's Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Article nineteen states that everyone has the right to freedom of opinion and expression. This right includes freedom to hold opinions without interference and to seek, receive, and impart information and ideas through any media and regardless, and regardless of frontiers. The Red October conspiracy attack of the government is too reminiscent of the grim days of martial law where educational discussions were suppressed and tagged as subversive or communist for the sake of political persecution. These marquician tactics only show that the government is not interested in addressing the basic concerns of the youth and the academic sector. Instead, it will stir up inconceivable plots to promote destabilization as a pretext to allow the police and the military to further intervene and silence the dissenting academic community critical of the regime's policies. We will not allow the suppression of the students and the youth as well as political discussions and films, particularly those that need the protection of free expression the most. The Philippines strives to be a democratic country. Our democracy lies in the will of the Filipino people. The spirit of democracy shall not be violated or degraded by self-serving policies. We call on the military to uphold its role to serve and protect, not accuse and threaten the people with legitimate and concrete demands. We urge other students, professors, and academicians from other universities to stand with us in our fight against political persecution. We pledge to uphold and protect academic freedom, freedom of expression, freedom of access to information, and various forms of expression. No fear mongering will stop our ranks from stand, for standing for what is right, just, and democratic.
Uh, dito na po nagtatapos, Madam Speaker, ang CP mula sa manifesto of unity na ito, at nais kong pasalamatan ang mga representatives na nagbigay ng kanilang suporta sa kampanya ng mga estudyante kasama ng kanilang mga guro, non-teaching personnel, na ipagtanggol ang kanilang mga pamantasan at kolehiyo at itaguyod ang academic freedom sa kanilang mga pamantasan. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no, uh, member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we refer the, uh, speech of the Honorable Sarah Jean Ilago to the Committee on Rules. So, move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The motion to refer the speech of the Honorable Ilago to the Committee on Rules is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other members who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move to terminate the privilege hour. So, move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The privilege hour is terminated. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other matters in the agenda, I move to adjourn, uh, session until Octo, tomorrow, October ten, two thousand eighteen, at three o'clock in the afternoon. So, move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The session is adjourned until three o'clock in the afternoon of October ten, two thousand eighteen, Wednesday.